All this meeting to order.
Next time, though.
If you could please rise and we'll have the invocation done by West Covina Police Officer Jeff Mosley. Jeff, please come forward and the pledge allegiance will be led by Councilman Steve Hurford.
God, we thank you for the freedom we have together before you here tonight as a community to discuss important matters that will influence and shape the future of our city. We ask for your grace and divine blessing this evening as we discuss these matters. Lord, we pray that you would give our Mayor Mike Tuohy, Mayor Pro Tem Sherri Lane, and fellow city council members Steve Hurford, Shelley Sanderson, and Fred Sykes the wisdom to lead our city with integrity, humility, and compassion in accordance to your will. Give them strength and guidance as they work diligently to find solutions and address each of the difficult challenges at hand. Bless each and every person here tonight, draw us closer together as a community, and help us to set the example for other communities around us. In the name of your most blessed son, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Jeff.
Please join with me in our pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Tuohy?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Lane, Councilmember Hurford?
Here.
Councilmember Sanderson?
Here.
Councilmember Sykes?
Here.
Mr. City Attorney Matt, report on a closed session.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The record should reflect that the West Covina City Council did hold its closed session to consider the matter is listed on the notice of special meeting pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-7.6, that being conference of labor negotiators concerning the various employee organizations listed on the agenda. It was a report provided by staff. No final action was taken and I have nothing further to report on that item. That concludes my report out.
I'm sorry about that. Mr. City Manager Andy, changes to the agenda?
I have no changes, Mr. Mayor.
Presentations, can I have the volunteers of the year, or first have Deputy City Manager Chris Frayling come down and then we'll do the volunteers of the year?
Tonight, the Community Services Department is very happy to announce that we have three different volunteers who are being recognized for their achievements and outreach to our community. So what we'd like to first do is call our first honoree forward, who is our Senior Services Volunteer of the Year, and that is Mr. Howard Leach. So Howard, come forward. What we'd like to do is tell you a little bit about Howard and some of his accomplishments here as a senior volunteer for the city of West Covina. Howard has been a volunteer for the West Covina Police Department's SHOP program for over 12 years and has provided over 6,600 hours of volunteer time with our community. In addition, Howard was sharing with me his volunteer time with the West Covina Food Bank that he did for many years as well. And so we're very pleased to recognize Howard as this year's Senior Services Volunteer of the Year. Mr. Mayor?
Howard, on behalf of the entire city council, and I know it's so great to see you, we have two honorees right now. One lives four houses one way, the other one lives four, he always gets my Wall Street journals. The city council and the city of West Covina is pleased to recognize you for the 2011 Senior Services Volunteer of the Year Award. Everything you do with SHOP is tremendous and the amount of hours everyone volunteers and does over there really makes a big difference. So congratulations for all your work you do in our community.
Thank you very much.
Want to go ahead and introduce him, Howard?
My wife, my number one grandson, my daughter Kathy, my daughter Gina, and Lisa, my granddaughter, and my friends and neighbors, Rod. He's the one who put me here. You don't want to be too busy in the committee. Thanks to the committee, thanks to the Mr. and Mrs. City Councils.
Thank you very much, Howard. Our next one, go ahead and stay up here, Mona Jackson. Mona?
Mona is our Community Services Volunteer of the Year. And Mona is being recognized for her dedication to the VFW as an auxiliary member who volunteers her time to assist veterans, seniors, and other citizens from our community. Mona volunteers her time cooking meals for many of those. She helps out and provides a great place to eat, meet new friends, and have a nice time. Mona, congratulations.
Mona, too, I've known you for many years. I'm so pleased to be up here in many different organizations we've both been a part of. On behalf of the city council and the city of West Covina, we're proud to recognize you for the 2,000 Unity Service Volunteer of the Year Award. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Mona, do you want to speak?
Oh, sure. A very nice surprise. I wasn't expecting this at all. And tonight I have my five grandchildren that I've adopted, Christopher, Andrew, Ashley, Rebecca, and Cynthia, and assorted friends, and a nice surprise. Kathy, his daughter, known them for many, many years, and his grandchildren, so it was a nice surprise to come in and see them here tonight also. It's like old home week.
Congratulations. DeeDee, can you please come forward? She's my neighbor that lives four houses the other way.
Again, DeeDee's being recognized, DeeDee Hussey, she's being recognized as our Recreation Services Volunteer of the Year. For those of you who don't know DeeDee, she was the first person to express an interest in volunteering at the Galster Park Nature Center. She has been managing the operations at the nature center for the past three and a half years. Just for all of your benefit, and we want to promote this, right DeeDee? The nature center is open six days a week and operates entirely on volunteers for the San Gabriel Mountains River Regional Conservancy and other members here in our community. So I know on behalf of the council, we really appreciate everything that you do over there, DeeDee. Thank you.
And likewise, you know, I've known you for a number of years and everything you do up there at the Galster Park, we greatly appreciate. On behalf of the city council and the city of West Covina, we're proud to recognize you for the 2011 Recreational Services Volunteer of the Year Award. Congratulations for your whole program you do up there.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all three to come over. Howard, Mona?
Thank you, Mike. Mayor Tuohy, members of the council, city manager Andy Passmott, staff, our fire and police department. I'm here to thank you for all of your support in the past. This past year, we were able to give money to the Good Samaritan Hospital for research. We were able to send some of these children with muscular dystrophy to summer camp. We had a Christmas party. And we also found a new place that we're donating some of our money to. This is CHOC, the Orange County Children's Hospital. I didn't draw this picture, by the way. This was drawn by one of the patients, and we want to thank you for your past support and for recognizing that this event is important to carry on. And so we want to thank you. And this year, we got three events planned. June 23rd, we're having a dinner auction at the West Covina Elks Club. Anybody can come. We're having a golf tournament at South Hills Country Club on June 25th, and of course, our important event, our 4th of July celebration. And I certainly want to thank all of you for your support, and God bless y'all.
Thank you very much. Now, if we can have Raymundo Trejo, please come forward to give his presentation. He's the Assistant General Manager of the Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District. Raymundo?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council, city staff, and the public here. Today, I'm here to make a presentation on the update of our recycle water program. As you've seen, a lot of activity over the last couple of years. But by way of background, I want to go ahead and get started with giving you a visual of what our resource portfolio looks like and why we're engaged in such an important project. If you look at this slide, the majority of our water is produced from our groundwater basin, which is about 66%. A large part of that water is imported from the Metropolitan Water District. That's the part that's not reliable for us because there's a lot of challenges with the state and the Colorado River where the water actually comes from. We've made some real important strides towards expanding our recycle water system, so that represents about 2%. And then a large part of our portfolio is also conservation, so a lot of the programs on education, low flush toilets, as well as some of the showerheads that we give away. That's an important part of our portfolio. So the objective here is to focus on that 22%, and that is the goal for us to gain more control by expanding that 2% and increasing that. This is one of the slides that represents that 22%. In the 80s, you could see this is a representation of Lake Mead or Hoover Dam. There was plenty of water. Just in the early 2000s, there was a chronic drought that occurred, which really drastically impacted that water resource. So in the early 2000s is when we started engaging in our program to start getting funding for that. There's also some statewide challenges with the water that's being imported from Northern California. We've got some species here. This is an example of one of the fish, or Delta smelt, that breeds certain periods where we want to bring that water down to Southern California. And unfortunately, we have to stop all pumping during those periods because of the migration patterns of these endangered species. So that really is another challenge that we have. More specifically, to our groundwater basin, this graphic represents what our groundwater basin levels. The red line represents the area that we do not want our basin to drop under. If you can look at the record, historically, a record low just happened recently in 2010, and that's because of the three-year drought that occurred from 2007 to 2010. One of the challenges with that is the rapid pace as to how fast we pump that water to serve all the San Gabriel Valley. So that was really concerning for us. So again, once again, why are we doing recycle water? Is to avoid these episodes where we rely on that imported water that was no longer available to us for three years. Fortunately, we did have a good rain season last year. However, we're in a dry spell once again, as a lot of the mountains, there's really little snow to get out there and enjoy. And quite frankly, the winter kind of passes this year. We haven't really experienced a good winter. So by way of background of our recycle water program, once again, 2000, the planning occurred as you saw the slide from Hoover Dam. There was a tremendous amount of concern on the low supplies coming into Southern California. So we started the grant funding process, federal process, and so forth. And then I want to, the last two points here, the last two bullets I really want to focus is that, or I should say the last three, 2009 through 11, you experienced a tremendous amount of construction in your city, as well as 2012, you will experience a tremendous amount, which is Package Three and Package Four, what I'm here to really present on the next slide. So here's a visual of our entire program for Upper San Gabriel. The north, or I should say, the northwest side is the city of Rosemead. But the red lines, the purple lines, once again, represent the existing system that's been constructed. But I really want to draw your attention to the red. The red represents these next two projects that are scheduled to be constructed this year. And the reason for that is that this American Recovery and Reinvestment Act dollars are only available this year. So we've worked with the city closely to make sure we complete a design that meets and exceeds your standards, make sure that the paving is adequate to what you foresee. We also selected streets that were not under moratorium, so that way we don't go in and cut streets. And by that time we're done with the project, it's really going to be a nice, clean street. So once again, the focus of our program is to nearly double our existing recycle water system, and it's primarily, if not all, in the city of West Covina. So this is a zoom-in of the same exhibit there. We have a number of packages that were completed, and what I'll do is go line by line on some of these packages, so you better understand what's been constructed and where we're going with this program. Package 1A was the construction that occurred on Amar, Azusa, and Ogallas. If you recall some of the construction activities, some of the areas were near the new shopping center, Home Depot, Target area. So all that was built and completed December of 2010. The other segment of our project was constructed last year. We successfully completed the construction of a 2 million gallon steel tank. That again was with close coordination with city staff and made sure that we were able to construct it in a safe manner. Next slide is the construction that occurred last summer as well, which is Package Two. This was primarily the activities that you saw in Azusa and Vine. And this is primarily the anchor or backbone system that will eventually lead to some of the schools that we'll be constructing to this year, as well as the golf course that acts also as an anchor client. And the last one is BKK landfill, which is really a large reason why we have this program here today. This is another picture of some of the retrofit work that Upper District funds as well, because it is an expensive process to not only build the conveyance pipeline, but once we get in front of your customer, there's an expense incurred in making sure that it's safely retrofit and converted to adequate use of recycle water. So Upper District funds this. Here's some pictures of the golf course, South Hills Country Club, one of our big customers. More specifically, what we expect in the months of April through October of this year is the following alignments. We'll have about five miles of pipe. We've actually curtailed that down to four miles because we're able to be efficient on the alignments. Some of the customers include eight schools, which we've been coordinating, working with closely. The purple on this exhibit, and I apologize for the size of that, but the majority of the construction will occur north of Vine, and if not on Vine, leading over to Lark Allen to make sure that we connect to those schools. There's another segment on the east side of the system, which is on Citrus. We've plumbed and had the stub outs ready to go, so by the time we get into the street, there's no delays on trying to tap into that line. We planned that ahead of time. And that'll be constructed leading over to Cortez Street, Portions and Cameron. And we're, once again, trying to connect to the schools with the least amount of pipe, but still get the most amount of demand. Moving on to the next slide, some of the description of the southern part of our project will include three schools, Gingrich Park, Creekside Park, Shadow Oak Park, some Green Belts. That as well will be parallel construction occurring this summer, and then hopefully will be completed by the fall to meet the objectives of getting all that funding. The next slide shows us a close-up of what's referred to, again, as Package Four Pipeline, the final package of this phase of the program. Some of the notable alignments there include Shadow Oak Drive, we have Stephanie, Gemini. And what we've also done is eliminated a lot of the pipe that was going to go through the streets and put that pipe in Paseos and Green Belts, so that way we minimize the amount of impact to the residents. And we want to make sure that it's all complete to the satisfaction of the city. We will meet all their latest and greatest standards on paving. And then we're also working with contractors that are well experienced. The one on Package Three, which is construction north of Vine, is a contractor that's done work here at the city numerous times, so we're very comfortable with their work and quality of their work as well. Then finally, I talked about the Package Three pipeline, again, north of Vine. We do expect some construction activities to occur as early as April of this year. For that project, the contractor has been selected through a lowest bid and competitive process. We are anticipating to conduct a lot of the construction adjacent to the schools right around the summertime, so we have the least amount of impact. We're also working closely with your city staff to make sure that we follow their lead as to minimizing the impact, work hours, keeping the site clean, minimizing any graffiti that may occur. We're going to address that on an ongoing basis. We're also hiring professional construction managers and inspectors to help and assist us in the construction of this project. The segment on Package Four Pipeline, which is south of Amar, Shadow Oak, Stephanie, that will also be constructed in parallel to this Package Three project. That will begin about a one-month delay on that because we had some specific design criteria on one of the parks, a pump station. So we'll have a lot of work going on in your city during that time, but our objective is to minimize the impact, work closely with your staff, and make sure we adhere to the highest standards that you have for the city. With that, we'll also have a retrofit package, where we've already initiated some of the design processes. Again, Upper District is paying for this, where we actually meet with the schools and ensure that we are converting their site safely and economically through our dollars so that it's ready to use recycle water once that pipe becomes available. The schedule for that, once again, is around midsummer, right around July, and that'll continue through construction through about the end of this year. So this is really the major packages that we anticipate, once again, because all our dollars are really going to the city of West Covina because it really is laid out to benefit from the recycle water program, and it'll really increase our ability to have more local control on water resources and then make the investment now that the dollars are available because the next wave of dollars are a bit away from us. So we're taking advantage in trying to utilize, fully utilize as much as we can this time around. If there's any questions, I'd love to go ahead and address them at this time.
Does staff, council have any questions?
Yes, please.
Councilman Sykes?
Thank you. First of all, Mr. Trejo, correct?
Yes.
First of all, thank you. Thank you so much. It appears that you are kind of speeding up things, so that I don't get too happy The artery that's coming from Azusa down Gemini, you're saying that you're going to be able to do that this year? I think it was Orange. It shows a line that's going to run from Azusa?
Correct.
Down past Via Corta School and Gianno?
Yes.
And into Shadow Oak. And you're telling me that this is going to happen this year now?
Everything in the red, with the exception of the city of Walnut segment, will occur this year for us to qualify for the funding. The entire design has been complete. This package is actually out to bid right now. Tomorrow, I have a pre-bid meeting with all the contractors, and given the linear footage of this project and the time it takes to put this amount of linear footage, there's ample amount of time to construct it in a safe and manner in the city. There's a lot of different streets involved, so it gives us the ability to spread out a little bit, and it's not one continuous alignment as we experienced in Azusa and Vine, which is a lot more challenging in a sense that you have a lot of traffic going on and only one alignment. Here, we can really spread our resources and get some work in parallel.
Okay. Thank you.
Does anyone else have questions? Raymundo, I want to thank you. I know you guys worked very hard on the last project, and based upon the other things you did on the, taking care of Vine Avenue correctly, led the city of Azusa, Azusa Water, to work and match what you did over on Workman Avenue for their customers when they disturbed the road. So thank you very much for what your board did, and you and your boss.
Thanks again. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Raymundo. That's all for presentations. We drop down to oral communications. Our first speaker is Lloyd Johnson, and then on deck is Elsie Messman. Lloyd? And Elsie, you're on deck.
Good evening, Mayor Turey, council members. At the last council meeting, the staff put together a report about our public safety. They spent a lot of time on this matter, and what the majority of this council did was toss all that time and waste the money out the window. And I, for one, would never want to see our public safety replaced with a lesser, inferior one. But from what I understand, the staff weren't saying, "Let's replace them." They were saying, "Let's see how we can save money to the taxpayers." Mayor Turey, Councilmember Hurford, and following right behind, like always, Councilmember Lane, tied the hands of all personnel involved in negotiation talks when they said they would never do anything to change how the departments are run. Thank you to Councilmembers Sanderson and Sykes for wanting to look at all ways to save our city money on public safety. Now, before you say, "I don't know much about negotiations or done," let me tell you, I have set in at least three negotiation contracts dealing between companies and unions, and I would never have made the statements like these three council members did. Then this council decided to do away with some commissions and combine some others to save some money. They froze all necessary spending and training and travel. One commission this council decided not to get rid of was the Arts Commission. They decided to combine the Planning Commission and the Arts Commission together. The Arts Commission was put together by Councilmember Hurford, so a few of his friends would have a commission to be on. Before then, the Planning Commission handled this job. Now, by joining the two commissions, this council will be able to do a little payback on a few of the Planning Commissioners who won't follow everything they want and vote against selling off our civic center and speaking their own minds. What we will have is some members on the Planning Commission who doesn't have a clue what's going on and won't have any way to learn with everything being frozen. If I'm wrong, why didn't this council just eliminate the Arts Commission? I know this council will say, "I am jumping the gun," how the two commissions will be joined, that you haven't made up your minds yet. But that will be like saying you hadn't already made up your minds when you voted to sell off our civic center property. Everyone knew the three council members had already decided to sell our civic center before there was even a meeting. Even the contractor knew she was getting our property. And we all know how this is going to end up. If this council really wants the best people on the Planning Commission, you leave the current Planning Commission alone and let them do their jobs. And if this council is really concerned about our budget, why haven't you cut off all the funding for your health insurance? Four council members have full-time jobs, which I'm sure you have health insurance. So why are we paying for other coverage which you don't need and we can't afford right now? This council wants everyone else to take cuts. Why aren't you taking the leadership and prove you really want to save our city money and stop taking any funding for health insurance? If you have already cut your health insurance, the city pays for it, great. If you haven't, why not? To me, leadership means you lead by example. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lloyd. Elsie Messman and Forrest Wilkins is next. Forrest?
Mayor, council, staff, and everyone here tonight. My name is Elsie Messman, and I'm a resident of West Covina. I would also like to speak on what we accomplished at the emergency budget meeting on 2/13/2012. I'm confused because for approximately two hours, I saw staff showing slides relating to the budget problems. I also heard Councilman Sykes make a motion that it was a good idea to get all the information and facts so the council could make an informed decision about looking into the county for fire and police services. Approximately 80% of our budget goes to safety. Yes, I think our fire and police department are doing a great job, but can we afford them? Yes, I'd like a Rolls Royce, but that's not on my budget. And then I saw Mayor Tuohy practically jump out of his seat and say, "I disagree." Mayor Tuohy went on with his rants about all his knowledge and all his experience running down county services. There are 40 cities in LA County that have sheriffs, and the county fire department has 94 stations. With union negotiations coming up, the union reps at the meeting- With union negotiations coming up, the union reps at the meeting, Mayor Turey, made a motion to not even look for free information and facts from the staff. I, like always, Councilwoman Sherry Lane, seconded the motion with Hurford agreeing. Here we go again. So there is nothing accomplished for the city, just a waste of time and money. What really got accomplished for the council was union support in the upcoming elections, money to be funded, their campaign, and being able to put on their yard signs, backed by the fire and police department. Smart leaders that care about the city would look into every option before making a decision. Council blames Jerry Brown, the legislators, the economy, and God knows who else, except themselves. When you point your finger at someone else, remember you have three fingers pointing back at you. I have a couple of suggestions that might help. I understand that Mr. Pazmat, our city manager, retired at the end of December. Why is he still here? Mr. Baughman is capable of doing the job. Mr. Pazmat's salary for one month is enough to cover all the commissioners' pay for a year or more. He is drawing around $18,000 a month, plus we can get our car back. So all you hand-picked commissioners got thrown under the bus by four council members. Now, how loyal do you feel? My second idea is do away with the Discover West Covina propaganda paper. Here again, we could save around $80,000 a year on salary, plus the cost of printing and postage. And Mayor Turey, you give everyone five minutes. Please limit your time, as we are not interested in your long-winded rants. No wonder people don't want to come to the meeting and leave early. If this was all that was accomplished at a budget meeting, no wonder this city is drowning in debt. Thank you.
Thank you, Elsie. We have Forrest Wilkins, the next speaker, and John Salise is on deck. John?
Based on evidence that I have shared in the past and what I will share with you tonight, I feel it is time to cancel the Evergreen contract with Athens. It's interesting to the citizens of West Covina, of the previous three times I have addressed this subject, the veteran city council people that collectively have received $50,230 in campaign donations from Athens, and these veteran city council people do not even try to justify why we have an Evergreen contract. Why would a customer such as West Covina citizens give an open-end contract with a business that was fined $500,000 for price fixing? I have that news article right here if someone wants to see it. What credibility does a business have that was fined a half a million dollars? The president and his son were also fined additional monies. Last week, front-page news in the Tribune, Athens attempted to negotiate a 40-year contract with South El Monte. The next day, it was reported Athens withdrew the proposed contract. Strange what Athens will do when the general public is aware of their business practices. I have a transcript of what Dennis Chapata said from the council meeting on the 17th. And I'm reading from that. Now, you heard the old adage, "You can't see the forest from the trees," referring to me. Well, I can certainly see Forrest Wilkins, and I can see him hiding behind the First Amendment. Hiding behind the First Amendment? A statement like that, one can only understand why his company was fined a half a million Going on, Dennis referring to me, "He also continues to make incorrect comments about our campaign contributions." I have the 460 forms that show the total of $50,230 in the last two-year cycle that the veteran council people ran. Another interesting fact, Lisa Marie Chapata, probably the daughter of Dennis Chapata, and I haven't seen her birth certificate, but she works for Alvarez Glassman Law Firm, our city attorney, who also is city attorney for Monobello. Athens has trash contract with Monobello. So the Chapata family works for Athens and our city attorney. Athens has a history of being fined a half a million dollars for price fixing. And we, as citizens, await our city council to justify why we have an Evergreen contract. West Covina City Council, eliminate that conflict of interest. End the Evergreen contract. The citizens of West Covina are watching.
Thank you very much, Forrest. We have John Salise next, and Art Valian on deck.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I won't take too much of your time this evening. I'd like to address your agenda item number eight of this evening, specifically the draft recognized obligations payment schedule. Item number nine. Item number nine is the OPA CFD. I compared that line to a payment schedule that I had dated August 23rd, and that line item has increased by $86 million. Also, line item 17, asset protection, that's a new item since August. I'd be interested, if possible, to request a meeting with either the city manager or his designate so I can understand the increases, especially the $86 million in six months on the line item number nine. Thank you for your consideration on this matter, and have a good evening.
Thank you, John. Can we have someone on staff get with him, Tom or Andy or both? Thank you, John. Art, and then Blanca Venzir is the last speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Turey, City Council. My name is Art Valian, and I'm the president of West Covina Youth Soccer. And the reason why I'm here tonight is I'm concerned in the direction of our soccer program that we have here in our city. Our home has been Edgewood Middle School for the last 20 years, and I'm not sure if all of you are aware of it, but half of those fields have been taken away from us, so we're not allowed to use half of that site for our program that we have here with the city. I know I've been working with the city for maybe the last 12 years. I've been part of this organization, the youth soccer organization, the last 20 years. What I would hope that I would get from the city and receive from the city is the support that we move up the priority of trying to find a home for our organization here in the city. I know it's difficult that we're on school property, and we have addressed that with the school district. They're seeing that they have their programs that they have now that that school is becoming a high school, and we understand that, and we're dealing with that. What's a little bit disappointing is that they allowed another youth program to come in and take over that site, which is a baseball team from Walmarado. And it's disappointing that we have a youth program that has probably a baseball league set up just about at every park in our city and every school in our city. Edgewood has been our only location that we've had to run our program. And to see that another youth organization was allowed to come in and take over that site was very disappointing in our program. Now we have basically half the space to have to run our program, and it's just not feasible. So I would ask for the city is, I know we've worked on it hard. Times are tough right now, but we have to find a home for our organization. I just don't see us continuing on and growing in the numbers that we're growing and have half the facility or half of a venue to utilize. So my request to the city is that we move some of these priorities and our youth programs up on top of the list. Thank you for your time.
Art, I brought it up around a month and a half ago. We talked about one thing in the interim because Orangewood Little League ceased to operate. There's a travel ball team there some of the time. If the spacing in those facilities can work at all with some of your programs, those have restroom facilities and snack bar already built there, and it's existing currently there.
Absolutely.
And to potentially look at giving you at least one field temporarily back at Orangewood Park where they keep on wanting to do total reconstruction instead of, God forbid I say the word, I'll get in more trouble taking out some of the trees so you can have one field. Those are recall words here. But hopefully, we can solve some of the 1,200 kids that you have in your league. But if you go to the back behind the baseball field, there is, I don't know your exact dimensions for the different age kids or which kids are being impacted the most in the leagues. If it's the smaller ones, Sunset Little League Field, which is behind the Sunset Apartments and behind Queen of the Valley, one of the fields are lit.
Right.
And like I said, they are smaller. They're better to contain the younger kids.
Absolutely. And just to let you know, they actually have offered that Orangewood Park to us on Tuesdays and Mondays between 7:00 and 9:00, which are tough hours, especially for the younger kids. But the areas they took away from were our younger kids. What's disappointing is that the reason why they stated to us we weren't allowed to use those sites is that they wanted to conserve the baseball field. Well, you don't conserve a baseball field by bringing another team in, especially 16 and 17-year-olds with still spikes. I mean, if there's going to be some damage done, it's going to be that age group. It's not the five-year-olds and the six-year-olds wearing rubber cleats. So that was disappointing, and there again, I know it's the school district, so.
Well, yes, we don't, so you know. Now, the school district took all the fields away from us. We no longer give out the fields. The school district has taken that from us, and they do it. And a lot of you who live in the area will see now they have brought in men's adult soccer at a lot of the fields, like at Merced, over at Hollencrest, and Manavista, where we no longer have any regulations on hours of operations or amplification systems. It's totally been taken from us. It's a different system. The Orangewood Park is ours, and I wasn't talking about the Orangewood Baseball Field. I'm talking about the space behind it where I think we can carve out a big enough field to get some of the thing. I think we can add three fields. I don't know if it helps.
Yeah, I don't think it's nearly that big, Mr. Turey, but we have actually been using it in the past for practice sites, and it's been working out, you know, great for the practice sites.
Well, I think we need game sites, too. That's your issue.
Yeah, it's just with the trees, like you said, it's kind of difficult trying to set up any type of field there of any size. The smaller youth programs or the smaller age group definitely would accommodate that age group. So that's definitely something that we actually have looked at already. So thank you for that. Again, thank you for your time, and I just wanted to emphasize that we need a home.
And we'll work on our, we did not know you had some of your space taken. I didn't know the school district did that. It is news to us, so.
And I addressed the issue as well with the adult programs. So I just wanted to make sure that they emphasize that it should be our youth programs from our community to go first. Second would be the adult programs from our community second. And third, it should be, of course, the outside parties coming in. And it seems like the outside parties have first priority because we had a situation where one of the fields had been taken away from us, and there was an adult team that took the site away from us. And I explained to them the situation, and I didn't think that was fair, but you could only push so hard with the school district.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Art.
Thank you.
Blanca Venzir? Sorry, Blanca. I know we went slightly over.
Good evening, Mayor Turey and councilpeople. My name is Blanca Venzir, and I'm here tonight to address the issue of the criminal element and the homeless problems we have at Walmarado Park, Palmview Park, and the businesses in our city. I have been approached by many taxpaying residents and owners of small businesses. Those businesses are primarily in the strip mall across the street from the movie theater. The taxpaying residents are outraged that they cannot take their children to the parks mentioned because the children and parents are afraid of the element of people they encounter. Is that fair, that taxpayers cannot utilize the parks and our small business owners are cleaning the fronts and backs of their businesses of human waste before opening for business? Let's talk about how this city has been saturated with homeless people, and I do have compassion for them. Trust me, I'm looking for a solution. Have they been dropped off at our city by a monetary agreement of some sort with the council police department? Or are they all West Covina residents at one time that all had resided in West Covina and have ended up in this situation? I feel that the taxpaying residents need to be enlightened as to what is going on with this issue and what will be done about it. When parents and children are afraid of going to the parks that they live in, this is a real problem for the city. They may encounter a homeless person who may be mentally unstable, act out, or find drug paraphernalia. Would you honestly take your children to those parks? Why is it that they appear primarily in this vicinity of West Covina? I drove up to Cortez Park this afternoon on my lunch break, and it was very pristine, people having lunch, relaxing, did not seem to appear like those other parks and businesses. By the way, one resident told me she called the police department about the problem at Walmarado where her children play ball. She was told that homelessness was not a crime, for Pete's sake, we know that. We demand a solution, or this city may be facing residents moving out of the city and going to other cities. That is not a solution. I'd like to leave you with the definition of the word "park." It is an area of land, usually in large natural state, for the enjoyment of the public having facilities for rest and recreation, often owned, set apart, and managed by a city, state, or nation. I ask you, and as taxpayers, who's really enjoying our parks at this end of the city? We once again are demanding a solution. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Blanca. That's our last speaker. If we could have the chief come down and address some of those issues. Some are going to be shocking that you may hear that the ACLU has very strong protections, and they've been granted that. It's very hard to move them. LA is having a hell of a problem getting them off the people's front doorsteps. And I clearly hear from businesses, Tiffany's, the hair salon, which is over there, and DK Computer behind there, that's over by the Long's Drugstore or whatever. It's not Long's anymore. And I know we have the prom in the downtown. Chief, can you address what we can do legally?
Remember, the city council, you're correct. I mean, it's so difficult. I mean, since the time I was on patrol a quarter century ago, and the homeless people, believe it or not, they know their rights. I mean, they know their rights. They assert their rights. They have a retinue of attorneys available to them to make sure that those rights are protected. But where the rubber meets the road in West Covina, it actually has a very timely question. We recognize that we had a problem in our parks along Glendora. Just yesterday, we completed a one-week saturation patrol along Glendora in our parks. We only made one arrest, but we issued 42 citations for an array of city code violations, for an array of penal code violations. That problem, I just checked in today with a few of the business owners. The problem along Glendora has been remediated considerably. We still have a problem from time to time in the park, and it's sporadic. The problem we have is we have officers who can go out there every day and not see anything, but then sure enough, one morning, they're waking up at 8:00 in the morning, they slept in a dugout. So that is a continued problem. We have directed patrol to address it. Walmarado Park is our more serious problem right now, at least the way we see it and based on citizen concerns. But the thing that citizens can do most to help us out when they see a problem with a homeless person, especially in a city park around our youth leads, is to call us right away. We always respond 100% of the time. I'd like to find the person who said it's not a crime because that reflects that it's not a concern of ours. Public order problems and disorder problems and quality of life issues and protecting our parks and the places where our youth congregate is a priority for us, and we'll respond to every single call 100% of the time. You can typically get there within 15 minutes, and there are legal ways that we can get them to leave an area for a short period of time, and we will address that and respond to every call.
We're having a different problem in Walmarado, obviously. I have property in there. I'm more going up and down Merced no matter what, going to my home. I don't know how to even address it. They have turned our barbecue pits into bonfire pits. When I went by, I think it was yesterday, there was eight of them huddled around our barbecue pit, and the flame was shooting up six, seven feet in the air. It's- It's, they're not using it for, and besides taking out the barbecue pits, which will harm residents that may use it for the appropriate manner, it's not designed to keep you warm at night. And that's what it's being used for. And I know you would see that too, Blanca. It's close enough to your house and they use the one closer to the dugout of the Mustang Field is one and the one right behind the basketball court is the other where there's around eight or 10 hangouts. It's like a gang. It's just a different type of gang. But I know we've had problems and we finally were able to get them out of the area over by Boca de Rio. And some of it was removing some of the equipment that they could sit on after we had a fight, a stabbing. I don't know if the person died. I forget that one. I know someone has died there. This is from natural causes, but they were fighting over one of the homeless girls, some of the men, that that was their girlfriend or whatever. I don't know if you remember that, but if we can just pay attention to it, there's no question in the Walmarado Park in particular, I can't say Palmview, there's clearly giant flames going by when you go by early in the morning. They have, they're going to melt our barbecue because it gets so hot. It's not designed for that type of heat.
That's the first time I heard that. That's actually an easy problem to address. And I should also add, I didn't mention.
A fire hose would be great, just to shoot them all. Not physically shoot them, want to make sure.
There is no fiduciary agreement, no renumeration the city receives to, to any business, to any support group for, for the homeless. I mean, there's no financial arrangement and certainly the city loses, we don't gain from that presence in the city of West Covina.
And there is a group that does get paid to pick them up and they, they take them to the, the resource center over across the street from Carl's Jr. It's not city. It is a county program and they pick them up at different places. Then you'll see them lying back up to get back picked up and take them back. They get paid for the transport, the people, and it's terrible because they go inside Carl's Jr. If you guys ever go by Carl's Jr. over there, they get a sack lunch when they get off the van and then they go inside Carl's Jr. They eat it and it's killing Carl's Jr. too. And people, it's not great to eat inside that place and Carl's Jr. can't address the issue either because they're not breaking necessarily criminal law and they're intimidating. There's 10 of them. We will only do drive-through at that Carl's Jr. It's not necessarily great to go in.
Agreed.
So, does anyone else have questions? Thank you very much, Chief. And thank you, Blanca, for that issue. Yes, Councilwoman Sanderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to just continue that and make sure that was extremely clear that we are the eyes and ears and of our community and we need to call the police department when we do see these things. And I just wanted to make a comment that it doesn't just happen in any, just one particular area of town. It happens everywhere. Over at Cortez Park, there was a family and I, I believe they were living in the park at night and there was a problem with that. We found mattresses on the trails. We've called the police and the city and they've taken care of it quickly. As a parent with young children that actually go to the park, I appreciate the quick response that we have had when, when in the parks. So I just wanted to remind everybody to call the police when you see these type of things. That's the only way that we can resolve this. And while I have the floor, if it's okay, Mr. Mayor? And that it does conclude the speaking.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify a few things that were mentioned tonight, some inaccuracies that I jotted down. First of all, when the conversation about the looking, a resident made, looking at the, I'm going to excuse my voice, I have a little bit of a cold, that Mr. Sykes made a motion to see all the options. I actually made the motion to do that. I, I thought that would be a good thing to do. The next one was the city manager was mentioned, why is he still working for us? He's made some major concessions. We need him right now with the budget. He's got the experience. It's actually saving the city money. That's why we went down that road. The next thing is the four council that voted on the commission, I was the one that voted no, so I just want to make clear on that. The next thing is in reference to Athens. I've been on the council, I believe, about 12 years and many times the contract has come up. We have lengthy meetings and discussions and we would like maybe you to be a part of that process, the speaker that did talk about that. It's a thorough process we have, we go through and this company offers us, the trash is a very complex situation. I don't think people understand you can't just open up a trash company and start hauling. We have state and federal mandates that we have to meet. This company has a huge operation. It's amazing. It's incredible. They, they help us maintain our, all our requirements above and beyond. And so if it, it's a question, it needs to be looked into deeper. And there was also a comment about $50,000 in two years. Well, I haven't taken a dime in two years, so just to make clear with that as well. And I just think that the hardest part of our job sometimes up here is to be dealing with the inaccuracies. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to, from my seat, to express just some clarification so that, that can be made clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sykes.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, going back to the soccer situation, I did not bring it to your attention, Mayor, but I did know that they had lost some fields. And I did touch bases with two members of the school board. And I strongly suggest that Mr. Baylen, please take the community with you and attend the school board meeting, the new, the next one is coming up, and present your situation to them. Perhaps with the ideas that you presented tonight and also what the mayor has talked about, perhaps a solution can be found. Now, the Evergreen situation is something I, that I spoke about in 2007. I, I thought that the contract wasn't the best for the, for the residents. And any of you that have met me at your door, that's one of the issues I've talked about was the Evergreen situation. Athens is a good company, but we also need to keep in mind that the residents want the best deal they can get. And that Evergreen situation deprives us of the ability to compare. Simple as that. The Evergreen does not give you an opportunity to get proposals from other companies so you can see in black and white what the best deal is for the residents. So at this time, I'm hoping that we can get staff to give us a study on how we can deal with this dissolution of the Evergreen clause, in particular of the contract. So if you can, please give us some, the public, give us, give us some information on how we can deal with this Evergreen situation so that we can get a good measure of how we can get the best deal. Right now, we're being deprived of, of that situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Herford. Elise, on the Athens on the disposal side, and I explained this to people before, Pointy Hills landfill is closing. You will see that close in 2013. It's mandated by law, it must shut down. What happened, and just because the recession hit, it's changed the delivery of trash service. Prior to this recession, the landfill is closing down approximately at 10:30 in the morning. So you still had trucks out there picking up trash, but nowhere to dump it. Okay? By having a MRF, which we have bought into through Athens, our trash trucks can go dump the trash at the MRF, which is owned by Athens and come back and continue picking up. Then they, they sort through the trash and they take it the next morning because they have a transfer facility and they get in line early then and they get it and take it to the landfill then. But our trucks continue picking up. Some trucks are having problems. Waste management uses Athens facility also and you have to see the MRF. It is a unique thing and I don't, I don't want to go over three minutes, Elsie. But it is a unique system. You should look at it and it's easy to say, but I think also, we've met all our state mandates, which were the, one of the only cities in the state of California that has met our recycling mandates. And we MRF, which we sort, material recovery facility, we, we sort and not take to a landfill 70% of everything you dump, which is unique. Not every city can say that. Now I have a, a statement to give. This is a letter addressed to Mr. Andy Pazmat, our city manager, February 21st. Mr. Pazmat, I'm writing this letter to inform you of my retirement from the West Covina City Council. This is from Mayor Pro Tem Sherry Lane. After 17 years of service to the city as both a commissioner and a council member, I have decided to retire from office effectively immediately. I would like to take this opportunity to thank everyone who has supported me during my tenure with the city as well as the city staff. It has been my honor and privilege to serve the citizens of West Covina. Signed, Sherry Lane. We received that today, her seat, but, you know, will be deemed vacated and it's just a very sad day for our community. She was amazing, one of the, she's the only person that was on the city council, was born and raised here. She's been here her entire life and she will be truly missed, the tremendous service she gave our community. So we need to set forth the vacancy and what processes we have as soon as possible because it starts clicking the 60 days. We have the consent calendar. Is there any items the council wishes to address on the consent calendar or pull off? Or do I have motions?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Moved in second. All those in favor say, or roll call, I believe is appropriate.
Councilmember Herford?
Aye.
Sanderson?
Aye.
Sykes?
Aye.
Tui?
Aye.
401, I think, still temporarily. I don't know what else to do there. Is there any council members' reports or AB, AB 1234 conference and meeting reports that need to be declared? Any city council requests for report studies or investigations?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request that we agendize for the next council meeting, the filling of the vacancy on the West Covina City Council.
No problem.
Would like to say a little bit about Sherry and city council in general. It's no secret that in the 22 years I've been on the city council, the attitude of the community and the, the negative dialect, I think that we hear from the podium has increased and none of us do this for the money, even though people come up here and say we get terrific benefits and stuff. We don't. We, we pretty much are volunteers up here and that's okay. You can, you can think otherwise, but you know, $700 a month isn't something you can live off of, so. But that's, that's the difference 22 years makes. 22 years ago, as a, as a council member, you're a respected leader in the community. You have a respected city manager who's not trashed by somebody at the podium. The, the public, the general public out there elects us. I just went through an election and was unelected. They like the job that we do up here, but it comes at some cost to our families, to our reputation, to everything that we do in the community. And it's not something that we all enter into without trepidation. We know that sitting up here, we're, we're subject to attacks and we're subject to at times praise, but the real ultimate test of anybody who sits on city council is what you do in the community and whether the people like the community or not. Obviously, there are some people that come before us that don't like the community and they don't like our staff and they don't like the job that our police department does. My job here is to represent 115,000 people in the city of West Covina, not six people that come up and speak at the podium. So Sherry Lane was somebody who stuck by her commitment to the community and wanted to improve it and did improve it and achieved a lot in her term on the council. She served two terms, one and a half actually, but she was a terrific, is a terrific lady and she's going to stay involved in the community. But it has changed in 22 years and our city, when I talk to people and they say, yeah, it has changed, I don't disagree with them. I mean, I, I grew up here and played on the streets and yeah, it's a different community. But when your hands are tied by the state of California, and I know people disagree with that, but the fact is we've lost $40 million over the last 10 years. It is very difficult to provide the same services that we, we provide to the residents and trying to decipher what the community wants and what this council can do is a challenge to our staff, to everybody who works here in the city and to the city council, to our commissioners. And, you know, it, it comes at a cost and, you know, Sherry's a terrific lady and I wish her well and I know she's going to stay involved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sanderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First I had a question of staff. Is there, and I kind of wanted to do it while the soccer people were here, but they had, have left. Is there a way we can draft some sort of resolution in support of what they're going through and try and meet with them and, and make this work out?
The council can draft a resolution, can take a formal position of the council if you wish to convey that to the school board. As, has been raised, we can also look at the, our Orangewood Park and see what can be done to realign the uses there and the schedules to try to help out in, in the interim.
Okay, maybe I can bring it back as a mother may I then? Okay. And then I just briefly wanted to respond to the letter that our mayor just read this evening. I have been blessed and honored to have known Sherry Lane. She was probably one of the nicest people you would ever meet in your entire life. I don't think she had a mean bone in her body. I can just tell you right now that serving this community is important to me and there's a lot of good people, but I'm really surprised at some of the immature behavior that does happen here, but that's okay. We all have our days. We all have that in ourselves, but I just wanted to pay her respects to, to, I will miss her and, but we will press on and we will get the city's business done. And I think that you look around, our city's opening new businesses. We're working on closing our budget gaps. We are healthier than, you know what my kid said once and I'll say it again, I said this years ago. When you drive down Azusa and you get into the next town or you drive this way, you drive that way, my kid said, you know when you leave West Covina because the city doesn't look as good as ours does. And that's a pretty neat thing to hear from children. I mean, they know our city looks good. Our streets are look good. We have a great staff and I'm proud to live in this city. I love this city. I'm not going anywhere and I'm going to stay up here and I'm going to continue to fight for the city because I think we've all done a fantastic job, given any circumstances. And again, I will sit up here and say, I hope the people that don't like things can come to the table with some ideas. Come to the table with us, help us. Let's work together at this because this is a great community and I think we all live here for a reason. It is a great community and has a lot to offer and that's why I'm sitting up here. But again, I just wanted to say that, you know, my heart goes out to Sherry and her family. She's, like I said, just a very sweet person and I was, I'm going to hopefully that I get to still see her and she stays involved.
Thank you, Councilmember Sykes.
Thank you, Mayor Tui. I only knew her until the last past six years, Councilmember Lane, and I, I thought that what I observed was a fine and decent person. And with that having been said, at this time, we need all hands on deck. So when you bring your, your criticism, also bring your work ethic. Roll your sleeves up. Talk to your neighbor when you leave here tonight. Have them come back to the next city council meeting. We meet every first Tuesday and every third Tuesday. This place needs to be packed because we have some serious decisions to make and it's going to be some sacrifices that we're going to have to make. It's just a matter of the choices and the consequences. That's what it's boiled down to, simply the matter of choices and consequences. And in order for us to have a city that we're going to be happy with, the majority of us need to be involved. And right now, we have a silent majority that's not participating. We've got to turn that around. If we want a city that we're going to enjoy living in, we all need to participate. Thank you.
Um, just to finish off, and I know I don't see John here, he may be, so Elise around here and I may be missing him right now, but he's okay. here, and I may be missing him right now, but he's up, okay. They're talking about the, the different obligations under AB 26. We're, we're having to make sure, and we're scouring all of our agreements, because even though people keep on talking about the obligation, it's the, the money that continues to come through of our property tax that will pay these obligations. So unless you fully correct, correctly get everything that you're entitled to out of agreements, you may not get it if you don't. So the obligations are going to be changing as we scour our agreements and find any little thing that is off. And it's not, they're not necessarily, it's, you may misread documents, you may have not seen some of these things. Like I said, the, the one thing that John brought up was the community facility district, which is, which is the mall deal. It hasn't really been looked at since 1989, when it was done by the city council at that time, which none of us were a part of. So I'm saying, they have to go through it, tear it apart, look at it, and make sure we're getting everything we need to report under the new state law, because that is how they're going to go forward and continue to pay. People talk about the outstanding debt. With this schedule, it also gets, comes money to pay this debt. So you can say it's debt. If you have a billion dollars in debt, but a billion dollars in income coming to pay the debt, you can argue that you're a billion dollars in debt if you don't look at your income schedule. And if I only look at my house payment and not my income, yes, I guess you can say you're upside down because you owe money, but you don't show the income, and you have to, to be fair. So I'm just saying, that's why they were going to, it will be changing, John. This may not be the last draft as we scour through the, the agreements and make sure we can get all the money West Covina is entitled to, and that's very important for you, the taxpayer, to make sure all the money we're entitled to. On the county thing, Lloyd, wherever Lloyd is now, I'm having problems seeing everything. He's upstairs, too. Well, he can hear me. I understand he may disagree with me on my statement on county fire and police services. We all can. We've, we went through this before and got a report from county fire before, and it was voted on by the people. They said in their proposal, they could save us money by closing station three and five. Now, I guess that's okay for some people, not if you live on the north side of town or on the south side of town, but I guess it's okay for people to live in one, two, and four stations. I didn't think that I'm going to compromise, and whether people agree with me or not, I don't think it's worthwhile extending the life of the response time because that could be the difference of life or death. And we can beat me up, say I'm wrong because I won't consider it. I, I equate it to this, if you're used to driving a Cadillac, and the cars make no difference, I'm just making a reference, and they're offering you a Pinto system, you can say you can save money by driving the Pinto, but I think we're used to a different level of service from our own police and fire. And when you're not talking about like for like, and they never have been, city of Diamond Bar has 60,000 residents, and they have two, two to three officers on duty at any one time. If you want to go down to that level of service, and I'm not knocking the people that provide the service, they would want more resources. If you ask deputy sheriffs, would they rather have more officers with them on duty? They say yes. So it's not a matter of that. We have a different system here. We have a lot more officers patrolling and to protect the residents, and we have a lot more firefighters on duty in our area. Station five would be covered by, I believe, station 66 at, at Lemon and, and La Puente Road in Walnut. And the north side would be covered by station 129 in Baldwin Park. Some of you may think that's good and worthwhile to get those type of estimates on something that's inferior. I try to equate like to like. We went down this path, 72% of the residents said no to county before. I think I am listening to the public. We may all disagree. We can all have our own opinions up here, but everyone, you know, you'll get attacked, you know, if you state your opinion, which, you know, last time I checked, I'm also a voter. I'm entitled to my opinion also. I understand when we talked about the soccer fields, I have a report, you know, this is how the city's being driven right now, that, well, hustle pays money, soccer doesn't. And I have a report, not produced by the council, by staff. That isn't how we should govern only. We, we have to provide services as best as possible, and it's because one travel team can provide, and I'm not knocking them. They're a great organization and team also. But I think we have many people in your soccer group, Art, and Art, I was there when you were there, my kids played there. I'm not just talking, but I was a, I'm, my kids grew up in your system, they just grew too big for soccer, and they play other sports due to their size. But, um, okay, Don. But we need to look at what we can do as best as possible within, within, some of the leagues are condensing, and we need to recognize that Orangewood Little League went out of business. So did San Jose Little League up at Shadow Oak Park. Friendship Little League, I believe, is down to around 36 players. So I'm saying, they have facilities, and we need to figure out how to best allocate the, the resources we have based on the, the number of participants. That's what is fair. 1,200 kids shouldn't be forced to practice on two fields when 30 kids get to practice on four. That's just not equity. And again, I'll be attacked next week, or some people will say stuff, but I'm okay. I've been here for a number of years, and I, I love my fellow councilwoman, but I, I have tremendously thick skin. I'm used to this. I've been at this for a number of years, being in business for 34 years in the community. People come and say different things, good, bad, and indifferent. Some days it's a great day, some days it's not a great day. But I will still do my best in what I think with the, you know, with the input I get from residents, and we may disagree. And it's, it's, it is a sad day. I think people will realize how genuinely nice Sherry Lane was, and they try to get her to be bitter, and that's really a testament of the people trying to get her to be bitter, how you view yourself over someone with class who wouldn't engage you. I think you really need to look in a mirror at how you talk and try to engage someone, and how they responded back to you about being respectful. So I greatly appreciate Sherry Lane and what she offered this community. Do we have any, Councilmember Sykes?
Just one question, Mayor. Thank you. The, the year we're in is 2012.
Yes.
And this information that you gave about closures of different facilities and subpar type equations that were given, when was this report given to you?
A while ago, no question.
Thank you.
A while ago, Fred. And again, like I've stated, Fred, I understand you're from the county system, and I understand you're more likely to be county, being a 30-year former county sheriff. There is a difference. I, I like, and again, it's a difference of opinion. You can state your thing, no matter when we got it. I think we have a great delivery of service. What was stated in the paper, and you can read it for yourself, we should have used it as a wedge, if you like, and, you know, to force them to negotiate with us. Now, of all people, me, most unions would have considered me pro-union. I think to force someone to try to come to the table by threatening them to take all their jobs and force them to another system, you may call that negotiating. I, I don't think threatening our police officers and our firefighters that you're going to come to the table and make concessions, or we're going to go county. And that's what was stated in the paper, that we need to use it to extract concessions. And that was said, stated by you again today in your comments. I believe that tactic by itself is inappropriate for the city of West Covina and this city council to engage in, to threaten and intimidate our workers to bring them down to their knees. And other people may want to, and you can vote for them in office. Go ahead, Councilmember Sykes.
I, I said this back in October, I think it was, when this issue came up, and Mr. Herford, I think he remembers my response, and I'm going to repeat it. My response wasn't about my allegiance to who I worked for, for 33 years. My response was about the people that voted for us. All we want is information so that when we make a final decision, that it's an informed decision. It's not about me. It's not about the sheriff's department, it's not about West Covina PD. It is about the people. And, and, and I'm, I feel sad that I can't get that across to you, but that's the bottom line. That's what's on my mind, is what is best for the people in the way of public safety. And that's all I'm standing for from the time I ran for office, and that's what I'm standing for now, what is best for the people. Thank you.
That is not what was stated in the newspaper. It was stated, I understand you didn't, sir. I'm saying, but you said it again here, and even Lloyd, even though I disagree with Lloyd's exact comments, he said it here also, that we should use it as a negotiations and against our current labor groups. And I disagree with that, and it's okay, we can disagree. I'm okay with that, and I, I still respect you. What happens here is when we say something, then it is a problem because I can't have an opinion. I believe we have fine men and women that work in our city. We're going to have to lay some of them off no matter what. That is clearly coming down. I still prefer our style of service and the service that we have in having five fire stations. I believe we can always do what the county does in most cities, and you can ask the representatives in those cities. La Puente has two officers that patrol La Puente. Well, of course, you save money. We can go to that system, you'll never get a response, but we can go to that system. I don't want it when my wife's in danger. I, I don't want someone waiting for an hour for someone to get there. And with the one problem, the way the county system works, so you guys all know, is when you have a problem, they backfill, they shift, okay? When West Covina has a major fire, 129 comes here, then another station further out comes and backsfills 29, and they cover like that. We cover ourselves. We only, when we go over and above. So again, it's a different style of system, and I understand that.
Councilmember Herford.
Well, I was just going to say, you know, Fred, I've been on here a long time, so I've got what I think is what I believe the residents want, and they want their own city fire department, their city police department. Inequivocally, I, any survey we did, have ever done in this city, any election on going to county services has always been debated, you know, unanimous. I mean, lots and lots of people have voted against it. So, so, you know, I understand you, you know, have your position, and, and maybe it's different than mine, because I've been through it. I've been through the elections, and I've seen the fervor on it, and, and I also know that, you know, negotiations, you know, they really aren't about the service level that, that we offer here. It's about what we can afford, essentially. And, you know, we've negotiated numerous contracts in the council, and we never really tied anything to whether we're going to go county or not, and I don't think that should even enter into it. It's, it's ultimately what the people want, and, you know, I, I respect your opinion because you, you know, you know, you've been around county services and stuff, but from my seat on the council, they, they are not in support of county fire or county sheriff. They, they know the service deficiency. I had a lot of people call me on this before the meeting, so I feel very comfortable in my position.
Thank you. Do we have any other council member comments or adjournments?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.